...Ricky Rollcall.
Mayor Connie Ball, Vice Mayor Mike Crawford.
Here.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Here.
Alderman Roger Gribble.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knives, City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fencham.
Here.
Okay, you need approval on that? Second, okay.
For the public.
Rollcall.
No.
Okay.
Two minutes.
Okay. All right. Okay. Minutes then from last meeting. I hear that we have a motion to approve the minutes as of last meet.
Will make that motion.
Second. Motion second by Mr. Fancher and Mr. Hansel. Okay. Rollcall, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And if opposed, I hear none, so we'll keep it going. Okay. Proclamation, recognition of citizens by the mayor. Who's got William Erby? Who's got him? Empty note. William Erby?
Is there not? There's not anything?
Okay. I didn't see it. Okay. Who's Mr. Erby? Maybe I didn't get anything or see anything on it.
I think it is.
Okay, I didn't see it right.
I thought, I knew it was supposed to be a.
I will. Big laugh then.
Okay, I didn't see it.
Mr. Erby, how is? Getting things done here. I'll read this proclamation very quickly from the board's stand. Whereas William Levi Erby. At the age of fifteen years old has advanced, achieved the rank of Eagle Scout. Scouting's highest and most coveted ranking of on February thirteenth, two thousand seventeen. Whereas William Levi Erby joined the Cub Scouting of Newport, Tennessee when he was in first grade. Whereas William Levi Erby joined the Boy Scout Trip two ninety-eight of the Great Smoky Mountain Council in Newport, Tennessee in two thousand twelve. Whereas William Levi Erby's steady and persistent progress through the ranks to achieve this prestigious award demonstrates his determination to prepare himself for a meaningful productive role in society. And now therefore in order to pay tribute to Mr. Erby, I Connie Ball, Jeff Fancher, replacing Connie Ball today, Mayor of the City of Newport, do hereby proclaim April eleventh, two thousand seventeen as the William Levi Erby Day and commend all citizens to recognize and support William Levi Erby. Let you know back in the day I won first place Cub Scouts two, our Boy Scouts two ninety-eight, but I'm with Erby deals.
With Erby, I was beat dead. I was third Eagle Scout at every inning Cock County from Methodist Church, so I'm an Eagle Scout.
I don't see your. I've got a trophy.
I've got the badge for mine.
Congratulations, sir.
That's a big honor. I know what it takes to get that. Okay, congratulations, Mr. Erby. I'm real proud of that. I, Mr. Ball had the thing, that's why I didn't know. I appreciate it. I knew the names on it, but I didn't know. I've got a few to present tonight, too. By the way, I'm glad to see Mr. Sid Butler back there. He's our new editor of the paper and stuff. Glad to have you here, Sid. But I've got, got to looking into it and we've got five girls from Cock County and Cosby that has gone on to play college basketball. We always try to, if it's football, baseball, baseball, whatever, any sport or any organization that we feel like it deserves a little attention and I'm just real proud of all these girls. And what I'm gonna do is, we've got, the girls, I kept thinking everybody would be on break like we were, but there wasn't any of them on break, so. But I've got some of them's parents standing here and I would like for them to come up here and I'll present this to you, but anyway, I'd like for parents of Michael Wester to come. And I think, I don't know if anybody got a hold of Tiffany. I tried very hard to get a hold of everybody, but some of them it's hard to get a hold of. Is anybody here for Tiffany? Tiffany Smelter?
She's at that All-Star event.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody here for Lexie Lowry? Okay. Bethany Williams. See, I wouldn't come up here to the podium, I please. And I know that Tammy Edwards here for her. And I know Bonnie Ellen Whittaker Ball is here for Allison Ball, so I know they're here.
Did you get a proclamation for Wade Wester for Holland to referees more than anybody?
I'm not, I'm not through with Wade Wester. I've got after everybody else that's down. Mr. Wester will still be there, him and Linda will still be there. I'm not through with them as easy. What I'd like you to do is to tell everybody in here, know everybody, I would like to tell who your daughter is and tell a little bit of her confidence. You know, I know it'll take a long time for some of you, but we want the highlights of it from the Wester family. Go first.
Why's all this, sorry?
He's been practicing too much.
My daughter Micah is playing basketball at Carsonum. She's a sophomore and she was first team all conference this year, which I'm very proud of. Second team all region. And she led our team in score, the second in the conference in scoring at eighteen point six a game. She led the team in rebounds, blocks, and just, just her hard work and just to watch her work so hard and to be accomplished and these other four girls with her, it's been amazing. She's also playing the drums for SCA and she's a SCA leader, so I'm proud of that, too. So if you ever get a chance to go to Carsonum and watch a basketball game, I can get tickets. I'd love for you to come. The boys play afterwards, so it's always exciting. And it's just a twenty minute drive. I know these, some of these kids went a little bit further away. But I think it's pretty cool that we have five girls at the same time to play college basketball. Must have been some pretty good coaching back in the day. They make it as hard as a coach.
We get a picture of y'all like, so I don't know if these guys can see it. We've got Bethany Williams, Nick Edward, and Tammy. I'd like for one of you to say just a little bit of work.
She did.
No, we're hitting people here.
She goes to Maria in Kentucky. It's about thirty miles from Lexington. It was a private liberal arts college. It was established in eighteen fifty-five. I'm gonna let him talk to him. She is a Bonner Scholar. She does service work. And she was really happy to get into Scholar, the Bonner Scholar, because only fifteen kids, freshman kids a year get in that program. And it's, she's the university that do that in the country. She was so proud to get in that because, you know, at Maria, everybody works. It's a tuition free school and everybody works. So she has to work ten hours a week. And some of her friends were doing cleaning rooms, cleaning bathrooms and cleaning in the kitchen, working. And another one of her friends worked on farm, chenille bleeds. And Bethany was so glad that she didn't have to do that, so all she had to do was go to school. She really liked that.
I'll just say about her basketball, we'll cut it short, but she.
We're proud of kids both way, academically and mathematically.
She, she's a member of the USCAA, which will become Division III NCAA this year basketball. She made it, they had a national tournament. There were eight teams that made it. When she made it to the tournament, she, they competed. She won with a teammate, the hot shot championship there. She also was recognized as an All-American this year and also made the All-Tournament Team at the end of the tournament. They finished runner-up in the national tournament for their division. Most proudest thing she was, get back to what you were saying, was she made the national All-Academy Team this year. Her grade will average is three point seven seven, so she was a triple now for that. Those are her, what she's most proud of.
I'd say I'd like to add one thing. She came back this past summer and worked at the Boys and Girls Club for little or no pay and with the Boys and Girls teaching basketball and she did a wonderful job all summer long. Great. We were grateful to have her and I think it was a good experience for her. We really appreciate kids that come back and work like that.
I think she's gonna come back.
Yes, hopefully she's gonna come back to us next year, too.
Yes.
I'm sure they do. All right, for Ms. Allison Ball, we got Ms. Bonnie Ball. She tell where you did play and things better.
Allison plays at UVA Wise. She'll be a senior next year. I did not compile all of her stats. I'm sure I will hear about this when I talk to her later.
You got a little bull, though. You're getting there.
She's a pretty good ball player, I would say. I was sorry she tore her ACL about a month ago, but played two more games after that trying to get her team, you know, further in the tournament. So she is a gutsy player. Her goal is to be a high school math teacher and come back and be a coach. So she appreciates all the coaches she's had over the years and we're proud that she can represent our county.
Next, I've got Tiffany Smelter. I know her family real well. Chief of Johnson Bible College. So if anything you get, if you know anything?
No, I just know this is my third year at Cosby and when I got there, everybody bragged about Tiffany Smelter. I didn't know who she was, being in North Carolina for twenty years, but being up there for the last two or three years, I found out she is the cream of the crop, just like these other girls. So she's deserving of what she's getting.
Lexie Lowry.
Lexie's playing at a school up in West Virginia.
Concord.
Concord, yeah. I was gonna say Concordia, but it's Concord. She garnered all, some All-Star accolades as well and she is senior this year. She is senior this year and I think her aspirations are come back to Newport as well and get into teaching, so I don't think she's solidified that yet. From one of the coaches up at Cosby, they said she does want to come back home, which is a good thing, I think.
We're proud of the academically and athletic part. I just, they are proud of our county, city, the whole thing is proud. It's a little bit closer here together than Ms. Allison Ball.
Allison Ball. Bonnie, at this time, we're gonna let you talk about your future son-in-law.
Are we on the record or off the record? We're having a lot of chaos at our.
But it's not unanimous. Is that what you're saying?
Really nice way for them Western step here. There's another reason I got them up here and they also a little bit later on, burn off them out here, but it's already been discussed to take in the Polyodin or award for cleaning up, helping clean up the town of Newport. I've been keeping it up the way and then for a long time and I've seen a lot of recruits. I know with my stood a bit, they have taken fifteen lapshaded properties and looks like forty, look up for the slum area and they have made big use of apartments out of them, working on another one now. But everybody that's working on the stuff in Newport, Cock County, that's the only thing we've been the proud of is unless they're cleaning up, I want to tell you how much I appreciate that and you get that award, but that's to keep Cock County beautiful. It's already been approved. Thank you for what y'all are doing.
Okay, next on it will be.
Another proclamation.
Okay. Oh, oh, yeah.
We are going to try and start recognizing our public safety people each month. Fire, police, EMS, they all have dates that are assigned to them to recognize them throughout the week for appreciation. And I think it's very appropriate that we start with where it all begins and that's on the other end of a telephone. My proclamation is from the Office of the Mayor of Newport, Tennessee, and it recognizes National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, which is April ninth through the fifteenth of two thousand seventeen. Whereas emergencies occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Cock County Emergency Communications District and whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency, emergency services and whereas public safety communications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighter, firefighters by monitoring radio transmissions and providing them information and ensuring their safety and whereas the Cock County Emergency Communications Districts, District have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients and now therefore in order to pay tribute to the Cock County Emergency Communications District, Mayor Connie Ball of the City of Newport, Tennessee does hereby proclaim that April ninth through the fifteenth of two thousand seventeen to be National Public Safety Telecommunications in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism helped to keep our citizens and cities safe. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and affixed the seal of the City of Newport the eleventh day of April, two thousand seventeen. So on behalf of Mayor Ball and the rest of the Newport City Council, I'd like to invite the Director and the staff of the Cock County Communications District to come.
This is Director Nancy Hansel. You might notice some similarity. I can't vouch for it. On behalf of the Mayor and the City Council, I present you this proclamation.
Would you introduce the rest of them, too? Mr. Hansel, do you mind doing that?
I'll do that.
Okay, Nancy.
This is Tyler the Hartzell, Tina Campbell, Matthew Elliott, who works part-time for us and is a policeman, Rodney Hazenwood, and Isaac Galford. And on behalf of the Cock County Communications District, I would like to thank the Newport City Council for recognizing the National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week, which runs through April ninth through April fifteenth each year. It takes a special kind of person to work in a nine-one-one center. Telecommunicators are the face that's never seen, but with a voice that soothes and calms the frantic person on the other end of an emergency call. We work long shifts with very little praise, then go home at the end of our shift to take care of our families. The next day, we get up and do it all over again. It is very gratifying to know that we help save lives. Again, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, Mr. Fencham, I reckon we're ready for comments from the City Administrator.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The first thing on my agenda in June, tenth through thirteenth, will be the TML Convention in Murfreesboro. First of all, any of you that would like to attend, please contact Regina so she can make your reservations. There is a conflict. June the thirteenth is on Tuesday and that is the night of the City Council meeting. So anyone who attends would be returning that day, but that night, the City Council meeting would be scheduled, the regularly scheduled time. And I'd just like to know what your pleasure is about if you want to keep that date or if you would like to modify the schedule. What we, what would work out best for us, and certainly it's, it's y'all's pleasure, but what would work out best for us if it would work to move it to Thursday, which would be the fifteenth. It'd be the same week, it'd just be two days later. If you go the week prior, it's hard, the department head reports are just not ready. We can't get those to you on the first week of the month. And then when you get into the third week of the month, you're getting almost towards the end of the month and it's time to start gearing up for the next meeting. So if, if we could keep it the same week, it'd work the best for us, but now it's up to y'all. It's whatever y'all's desire.
Was that May or June?
I'm sorry, it's June.
June, April.
What's the, the workshop?
Roger, you got any other day to move to the.
No. I've got previous commitment on June fifteenth.
That'd be what, June what?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, it'd be Thursday.
Maybe June fifteenth.
Be just two days later than the regular. I can't either. I've got school, something related.
Well, I mean, that was our recommendation. Y'all can do whatever, whatever works for you.
Fifteenth is okay with me.
Well, you got three says it can't be.
So the next Tuesday is what, Mike? The twentieth? Would twentieth be too late to do it for the next month?
Well, it's not too late. It just runs them closer together.
I can do any one, but the twentieth and twenty. Roger, is twentieth okay?
That's okay with me. Should I try to squeeze in here on the thirteenth?
What do you think? We've been in here on the thirteenth before, but it runs it pretty tight.
Yeah, that's, that would be the day you travel back from Murfreesboro.
We did it before.
Was that before?
That's up to y'all. It's strictly up to y'all.
Leave it like it is.
Leave it like it is, just get it back.
That's your all preference. Be fine with me.
It's fine with us.
Okay, so it'll be the. Thirteenth. Thirteenth? June thirteenth? Just like it is? Okay.
Driver, if you ride with James or Maurice, you get back pretty quick, so. They got that police.
The next thing is the budget packets. We have put a budget packet out for each of you to review. The budget workshop will be next Tuesday and so that gives you a week to go over it, look at it, study it. If you have any questions, please call us. We'd be glad to explain, answer any questions that you have.
Is the department backup budget, is it in here? I mean, can we filter it down?
Yes.
I mean, we see a figure. The backup budget from the department's in here?
Yes, it is.
What they wanted?
Yes.
First of all, okay.
Everything is there. Every little detail is there.
Okay.
Mayor Ball asked me to report that he has requested and they have approved to do a study at the traffic light at the intersection at Brock's and that is to try to obtain a turn arrow. If you're coming into town, it's hard to turn left at busy traffic times and so TDOT is wanting to do a study to see if one is warranted there and then we'll go from there. But he just wanted to report that because he'd been, City been getting a lot of complaints. Y'all may have had some. But TDOT has approved that.
I'm sorry, what was the location on that?
That's yeah, that was Brock's.
Okay.
That's not a bad idea.
Finally, on my list, Mr. Gribble had called a couple weeks ago with some inquiries. One on the distillery. He wanted an update on the distillery for tonight's meeting. That is in your package in the sleeve in your book. Mr. Carver hit a report on that and so that's in there for you to read. It's your pleasure. He also asked for some information on the drug stats involving the Police Department on arrests as compared to other agencies and the Police Department compiled a list of comparable cities and surrounding cities and that's also in there for you to look at. That's all I have, Mr. Vice Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fencham. Okay, is any appointments for Board? There's not any appointments for Board or Commissioners Committee, okay? The Tanner renovation, Cardine, you got anything? Okay, there's not any report from Mr. Rockson on the.
Where are we at on state money on that?
We have it in the bank.
Oh, okay. So it's available if y'all draw on it?
Well, it's available to be used to do the renovations to the building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They can draw on it to do that.
Well, they, well, you can't just, I mean, it will be bid out. When the architectural part is done, it will be bid out and then it'll go from there.
Do you know when you're gonna get your architectural finished? Do you have a certain period to use that money?
We have to have it under contract by the end of June.
Wow. You know when your architecture drawing is gonna come out?
We're dealing, they're not dealing with architects. We are.
Oh, okay. You know when that.
Well, we got, we, we got, and it's in your packet. We got a correspondence from them today by email. And in the back of your budget packet, that is in there.
We're gonna discuss this at length at this workshop.
Correct, yes, sir. Because they have come back with a, they keep coming back with a higher number than what is budgeted, so you're gonna, y'all are gonna have to decide what you want to do on that.
We're gonna have to move pretty quickly to get those out and get them bid and get them back and use the money. Get it committed.
As long as we've got it under, just so we've got it under contract, we're all right. There don't have to be anything that's been done. We just have to have a contract signed.
But we'll have to have completed drawings, though, before we can put it out for bid, won't we?
Well, they've already been working on that.
All right. Next thing, if nothing else to be said, old business, we're gonna, consideration of, to be, Mr. Hurst is gonna read these out for the ordinances in City of Newport.
Yes, sir. The first ordinance is a second reading of ordinance two thousand seventeen dash zero three, an ordinance to amend the City of Newport Municipal Code Title Twelve Building, Utility, et cetera Codes, Chapter eleven, one and two, Family Dwelling Code, and adopting the two thousand twelve International Residential Code. Of course, it's just a date.
Mike, did you say you wanted to hold a vote on that or delay the vote?
It's not on, A, it's on D that wanted.
I thought it was A and D.
No. I don't think. Just B.
Okay.
So we need a, we need a motion and a second.
So move.
Second. Okay, Rollcall, Mr. Tainer, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? I hear none, okay? B?
And the next one is ordinance two thousand seventeen dash zero four, an ordinance to amend the City of Newport Municipal Code Title Twelve Building, Utility, et cetera Codes, Chapter five Housing Code, and adopting the two thousand twelve International Property Maintenance Code.
All that sort of cut and dry, that's stuff that you have to do to keep up with the state's requirements, so if anybody change, quit, don't, avoid, just have a roll call.
Make the motion to accept as written.
Second. It's been motioned, second?
All in favor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I hear none? Okay. C?
The next one is consideration of second reading of its ordinance two thousand seventeen dash zero five, an ordinance to amend the City of Newport Municipal Code Title Twelve Building, Utility, et cetera Codes, Chapter ten Existing Building Code, and adopting the two thousand twelve International Existing Building Code.
Make the motion to accept as written.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion, second? Mr. Fancher, Mr. Gribble? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? I hear none, so, okay. And D is the one we're waiting on. They said they would like to be here when this is worked on, so I guess we've got new business. A consideration request of excess of accumulated sick time. Do you need to explain that or anything?
I'll explain that, Mr. Vice Mayor. Per our personnel policy, we have three categories of sick time. We have the standard sick time, which is your annual sick time that you get every year. We have the accumulated sick time, which you can build up to thirty days into. And then we have what's called early retirement time, but can also be accessed as sick time, but the employee has to meet the criteria, which means they have to be, had a serious accident or illness and be approved by a doctor or at least verified by a doctor as being unable to return to work. They have to put in writing a request to access that third level of sick time and that has to be recommended by the department head to me and has to be approved by you all. Mr. James Ottinger has written a letter asking that he be allowed to access his third level of sick time and Ben has recommended that he be allowed to do so and so it is on the agenda for you gentlemen to consider.
I move, we approve.
Second. Been approved in second. Is anybody opposed to it? I hear none, so it's been, it's, that situation really need to be handled that way. I bet man, what, still trying to go back to work at eighty-seven years old? Okay. Go ahead and carry reading.
Yes, sir.
The next time is consideration of renewal of paving.
The next one is consideration of renewal of paving contract for fiscal year two thousand seventeen dash eighteen.
You'd like to comment on that?
Well, that's, Ben has that. Um, in the contract, uh, that you all approved last year when the bids were accepted, there was a, uh, clause in the contract that allowed for an extension for another year if you also choose. Ben would like to recommend that, that we extend it for another year.
So move.
Okay, good.
Second.
Second, got a motion and a second. Anybody objecting?
As I understand it, Blaylock is going to try to, he's got an agreement with the, his supplier to try to hold a line on the cost of that.
Right.
Okay.
Next is, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are you opposed? I hear none. Okay, the next one, consideration of downtown master plan. I think Mr. Carver's gonna speak on that.
Thank you, sir. In your book, there is a draft, uh, and we were discussing this last month about following our own plan. And so in my research, which is, uh, a lot of reading old minutes from old council meetings, if there has been a plan ever for any part of downtown, it's never been adopted by council. So I guess the best thing to do would be take steps to get that, to get something adopted so that we would have a measurable, a roadmap for measured success for anything we do downtown. Uh, this is just a draft. Uh, there's some pictures in there that are not even of Newport. There's some that have been properly cleared from the Seth Butler Photography Library that I used. Uh, and it could use another proofread for sure. Everything that's in it was compiled using a marketing study that the partnership commissioned about six months ago, and current downtown economic trends and region, in the region, state, nationwide. The, oh, and some demographics that were gathered for the survey done on downtown back last summer. Uh, like you guys, so take it, look over it, and come back to me with any suggestions, edits, any ideas that may have not come up in the research that we could use down here. And then we'll make another pass at it, discuss it, and I guess eventually, if you look, yeah, when we lack the way it looks, we can vote to actually adopt it. So then we know we have on file, on book, a downtown master plan.
Appreciate the work you've done on that, Mr. Carver. We had it in our package, and I think you've put in quite a bit of work on that. That's what I'm telling you. I appreciate you all the work.
Thank you, Coach.
Did we ever find, uh, I know the Plan Talk had parts of one of the studies that was done by the University of Tennessee. We'd commissioned one. Were any of those three plans that's been done for downtown area ever been found?
I do have copies of all three of those.
Oh, okay.
And I've used, I'd referenced those a couple of times in this. Uh, pulled some of the best parts out of them, stuff that, because I think the most recent one is still over ten years old now.
Yeah.
So I pulled the best parts I could out of that and put them in here.
And looking over it, and I've just had the opportunity to look over it for a couple of days here. And, uh, but, you know, there's a lot of things in there that we're fixing to, by this railroad thing that we're doing, we're gonna, you know, uh, make it extremely difficult. It looks like we could implement that part instead of waiting until thirty to do it, or twenty-five, we could implement it earlier. Since we're already doing these, I know the last time I brought this up, they said, I think you made the comment that just a different, you know, change in color of poles, but, you know, it's a lot more than that. If you look at the, what the drawings were and what we're fixing to do with the state, turn them loose on these, uh, three streets up through here. We're gonna have, we're gonna develop a downtown area. I don't think we should turn it into an aluminum city like we did over here across the bridge.
Yeah, I, I misunderstood you last month, actually, Mr. Gribble. Uh, you were talking about the design, not just necessarily the color. And I spoke to Dandridge, and TDOT actually did a lot of their, uh, their decorative poles, uh, and their, I don't think they've got a railroad crossing they've gotta deal with, but they did a lot of their stuff on their dime because of their historic district. So I've actually met with someone from the East Tennessee Development District about establishing that. So hopefully, we can use that, whatever benefit we gain by establishing the historic district over here, I think that'll give us some advantage when negotiating with TDOT on anything that comes through. Uh, and that, and that was actually one of the, one of the design elements, uh, and one of the phases, I believe.
It's one of the phases.
Yes, sir.
I think it's about twenty-five.
Yeah, no, and anything, yeah, any... That, that was going back and replacing what we had. Now, if we get in front of it, like you're suggesting, I definitely agree with you that we can get a couple of things in there like we want them and not just what we're given. I definitely agree with you on that, and I'm, I'm ahead of that. I'm trying to work ahead and get ahead of them on, uh, get ahead of TDOT for whenever the Broadway repair work is done.
I received that, uh, two thousand seven plan, and, and the thing I like about this, it's, uh, it's another version of it. I, I wanna act on it. The two thousand sevens got mold on it. But I, I wanna ask you, what's the definition of aluminum city? And are you, are you in agreement?
From Northport and coming to the railroad, what we did over there with all that, uh, I don't know how many lights we've got over there, the type of poles we used, and we made no effort to, uh, implement any part of the downtown area if we wanna have a, uh, an active, uh, growing, vital downtown area. You know, those, that's the type of things that's really gonna stall that. And when we have things in that move in, we do things like take out red lights that causes it to fail. We had a great, I don't know if any of y'all ever went to Ace Antiques, but it was a good shop, quality products. She advertised nationally, and we took the red light down that she had just put in the national ad, uh, on Jefferson Street. And now, we don't have anything up that street but one locksmith and a garage, and then the, uh, florist at the end of it. And, uh, but, you know, there's, we're losing a lot of businesses by doing things because we're not planning, and we don't even think when we do this stuff. You know, the first month that we bagged that light, the girl, the people at the cleaners lost four thousand dollars that month. Their business lost it. We still, uh, now we've taken a complete hit for it because those folks are gone, along with a lot of other people, and Ace Antiques.
They had health issues involved with their decisions as well.
But also they...
But what are you, what are you wanting? To go back to what it looked like, you know, this coffee pot shot here?
No, I'm not wanting to do that. You know, you could go, you can go up to Way, you've been to Waynesville. Look at their downtown area. You can go over to Dandridge and look what they're doing, but you've gotta have a, you've gotta quit doing things like we did at the bridge over here where we created...
That was out of our hands, was it? That stayed, I hear a lot of weeds in that.
TDOT did that probably.
We had nothing to do with that.
Well, we agreed to it. We had to agree to it.
That was down with what we ever should. We can, we can try to correct problems of the past.
But anyway, the, uh...
It was not our...
It would've been very easy to put that in a plan instead of just slapping it up up there. We're fixing to, we did approve all these other things, and they're gonna look, they're designing the same way, what I've seen on on these other four streets up here. We're gonna have the same big aluminum poles, lights hanging down versus what they do in Marsh Town, what they're doing in Dandridge, signage, color, and making it more of a downtown area. You don't have to go back to the coffee pot, but we need to do something. If you ride up and down the street, we're losing businesses daily through there. We've got one restaurant downtown now, and we can't even keep the trucks out of the front of it. Six trucks, since that lady opened there, have come through East Tennessee Coffee.
What are we supposed to, I mean, you're acting like we're...
Well, we need to start, we need to, well, we, we need to get a truck through there.
We have, we have one.
We don't have, we don't have a mandatory one. We can't keep trucks off of that corner. And they drag, they, they used to knock the poles over down there. Now they're knocking the building over, and they're dragging, uh, dragging it up the sidewalk. You can sit down there and watch trucks. They're going up the sidewalk as they come around that corner. And you have to back up both ways. It's just a horrible...
Mr. Police Chief, is there any way to negotiate with the state to go, or Mr. Carver as well? I, I defer to either one of y'all, to tell the state that maybe we don't wanna stem down by the coffee shop. Do you have any negotiating skills?
We met with a designer dinner the other day, and I had questions. Even had a guy standing by the transfer truck to do drive-through. He said, send your truck home. I can, he can take the computer, set the transfer truck anywhere it goes down there. He has taken those, gonna try to do some designs to make that traffic either. That TDOT is able to consider a left turn only down there, so it's not stagnant. We are making effort every day to try to get this thing to, through TDOT, and get it drawn out, planned out, so that we don't have somebody running through a business.
But you have to go through the state, but that's not our decision, I'm thinking.
We, we have to, but we change the traffic travel on the state highway, but we don't have the authority to do that without TDOT.
Well, but we can still control traffic within our city. If we've reached a point with the state that we can no longer control what goes on in a city street, even though it's a state road, then we got real problems for it.
And again, I, I got to address last one. What we're doing with the suggested truck route is directing traffic to violate our city ordinance. We're telling fifty thousand, sixty thousand pound vehicles to go down a ten ton weight limited street instead of going through a state highway intersection and turn. So, I mean, it's, puts me in a catch twenty-two, I say me, in our agency. I don't, I'll protect our right tickets all day, but we're not seeing the violation. I mean, wow, once we have an ordinance in place or a state law in place mandating that to be a right turn only, we'll force it all the way.
We have, we had an engineer come in about three weeks ago, and Gary and Maurice and Ben and I went down with two engineers who do work with the state. Now, they're not state-employed engineers, but they contracted the state. And they looked at both intersections. Uh, they're gonna consult with the state. They said they would travel in four to six weeks to get a report back to us on what our options are down there. So as the chief said, this is not a stagnant issue. It's something that we are, are looking at. With everything you've got to look at with, when the engineers tell you, here's your options, then that's your option. And so we're, we're waiting on him. One thing that he said that he thought would be a good idea, and he thought he could use his contacts with the state to get us, uh, one of those message board signs to go over on North Street, 'cause we've got just a little street sign over right now that talks about the truck route going right on Main. And he said that you have to, because that's such a busy intersection there with so much going on and so many roads coming together, that these truck drivers are watching traffic. They're not looking at the signs as closely as they could. And if we had the message board flashing sign over there, that that would draw their attention. And so that was his first recommendation, and he said that he was gonna talk to the state. He said they got a field full of them sitting somewhere at one of their centers, and he felt pretty confident that he could get us one to go over there, and he said he thought that could have an immediate impact because what they're saying is they're not seeing the sign that tells them to turn right on Main. And so, because they're still following their GPS. And, um, so he said to give him four to six weeks to get back to us with a report, and that's been three weeks ago, so...
Appreciate y'all working on it.
Someone oughta tell the owner of the, uh, East Tennessee Coffee that because she was advised by the city that, uh, there was nothing we could do about those trucks coming through there.
I spoke to Ms. Bealy last week.
Well, I, I'm not saying it was you or Maury, but she was advised.
We stood down there and the people that run the restaurants stood there and looked at us, and nobody came out and talked to us.
But, and Bullard's one...
I told Ms. Bealy, I emailed Ms. Bealy last week and let her know we were, where we were at on it. And Shannon, the lady that currently operates it, I've told her where the status is. Yes, sir.
I appreciate everybody working on it. If you don't move on with, uh, okay, bids and purchase expenses, consideration...
Wait, wait, are you through?
If, yeah, I just, you guys look over it, and any suggestions, uh, I'll, I'll do a better...
Well, I think it's very aggressive, and, yeah, a, a plan, a plan for two thousand thirteen. Imagine that, a plan.
Well, our, our opinion was you can't get, you can't go anywhere without a map. And this gives us a map. It's, you know, it's fairly ambitious, uh, and it's spread out because it's very expensive. Yeah, we'd like to do it all next year, but it's very expensive, and we've strung it out, and Gary's done a great job on it.
Yeah, I, I agree.
And I'm very pleased with it.
Well, one problem previous administrations had, they didn't have a city planner. And I have the utmost confidence in Gary and his abilities, and I think eventually, you know, we'll start to see some change here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our, I appreciate you and Gary both working on things, too. All right, the next thing, bid, consideration of bid for banking service for the City of Newport. I'm gonna let Ms. Tina maybe address that.
Okay, we had two bids come in for consideration, Newport Federal Bank and US Bank. And after reviewing both, as an overall service to the city, I would recommend Newport Federal Bank.
That's a hometown bank, too, in the state here. You need a motion and...
Is it the least expensive?
It actually has the most interest rate.
Pardon?
It has the most interest rate.
The highest interest rate.
Highest interest rate.
Yes.
Lowest cost.
Good.
Okay, we need a motion to approve. I make a motion that we go with, uh, Newport Federal.
What's a transformation period? I mean, are you talking about, how, how's that going? Could they click on a button, or is this gonna be a gradual thing? It's gonna cause you a bunch of headaches?
It's gonna be a gradual thing. You're talking at least a couple of months, I would think.
Is this gonna help you expedite your payroll better? From what I read, it, I mean, they, they dotted all i's and crossed all t's. But I know you had issues with our present bank since the, the change of hands and the change of ownership of getting done what you needed to get done to do your job. And I, you talked, instead of headache, this will eliminate...
Yes.
Gradually and eventually, your headaches.
It will.
Okay, I, I hear a motion that we go in.
Motion to approve.
So move. Okay. Roll call, why, just any name, or just, roll call, any of you need, just roll call.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes. Uh, the next thing on the, is a consideration bid for towing and storage vehicles seized by the City of Newport Police Department. Uh, Maury, do your, do your...
We put that out for bid. It's supposed to be every two years. We kinda, uh, got behind a few months getting that done this year. But the bids have gone out to everyone that is approved by the Tennessee Highway Patrol for towing. That is on our rotation. Uh, each company had the opportunity to return a bid. The low bid for towing and storing our vehicles was, uh, made by Newport Raceway Towing, and that bid was forty-four dollars per tow for each seized vehicle with no storage up to a year of, for those vehicles, no storage per month.
That was by far the best deal that could've...
No, that's a hundred and twenty-seven dollars cheaper than any tow bill we have for anybody else.
I didn't understand that. I was looking at their bid, and they said forty-four dollars, then they said it, uh, and whatever was consistent with the state, which is a hundred and sixty-five.
That, that first bid is a hundred and sixty-five dollars. That's what the state tow rate is right now. But he, he opted to say he would do those tolls for forty-four dollars apiece instead of a hundred and sixty-five.
And you're asking if he had made a mistake.
I called him and said, Drew, is this your bid? We've just opened them. Is this really your bid, forty-four dollars? And he said, yes.
Good deal.
So it's, the state bid right now's one sixty or one sixty-five, and it could re-increase. Uh, the Highway Patrol makes that determination, and every record service that we use has to be approved by the Tennessee Highway Patrol and inspected for business.
Thank you.
How many tows did you do last year, approximately?
Oh, good gosh, I don't know, but this is not for every tow. This is for the vehicles that we seize as evidence, or vehicles that we seize for drugs or DUI, or... And under the new law, there's gonna be an option for seasoned vehicles, uh, towing vehicles that have not insured drivers operating.
This is a lot better for y'all because you know where all the stuff's at in one place.
We've got car awarded to us. It's at the same place every time, not, not going through five record services trying to find them. That's the whole purpose.
And he could secure on it?
Yes.
Okay.
And another issue was, for many years, you know, when we seize a vehicle, it takes time for that vehicle to work its way through the justice system to where we're actually awarding the vehicle. And then sometimes that can take months. And so if that daily storage fee is being added on every day, what we were finding was at, sometimes at the, and many times, at the end of the process, we owed more than we could auction the vehicle off for in storage fees. So now they're, they're good about not char, starting to charge those until we are awarded the vehicle. So then it's on us. We let it set there once we've been...
The storage fee, once that vehicle's awarded to us, they have within three days to, to pick the vehicle up, or that storage fee automatically starts, automatically starts attaching by the state, so...
Okay, we ready to vote on them? All right.
Vote, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we...
I make that motion to use, uh, Raceway, Raceway, you put Raceway, towing, second.
I got a motion second. Okay, roll call, Ms. Tina.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes. All right, the next thing on the agenda is consideration bid for two large... All right, the next thing on the agenda is consideration bid for two large trash units from the Street Department, before Mr. Higgs ends the meeting, I have been out there and looked at your trucks, and he sent pictures, done a real good job of getting this together, and they're needed very badly, so.
They're pieced together.
Can't weld them because rust won't open.
We've got patches on patches, and these are 20-year-old vehicles.
Because they've only got 212 and 272,000 miles on them.
I don't see how they've been doing it.
Do you?
Sir? I don't see how he's been doing it.
I don't either.
You don't need to say too much, do you, Mr. Higgs, I believe, I understand where you come from, you want to go down and get it done.
Well, tell us about, I know it's one that's two, is nine of 10 two same vehicles?
Yes.
Okay.
They were bought at the same time, 2000, or in 1997.
Oh, I'm sorry, the two that were on the purchase are the same?
Yes.
Okay. We're hoping these will last 20 years like this.
Yes.
We won't be here to send what we're having around.
These are the same size.
Do the old ones go to eBay, if you will?
The Godbills.
Is there any salvage, salvage value to those things?
Not really.
Don't think so?
We'll melt them down for paperweights.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
They're in, it's in the budget?
It's in the.
It's in my budget.
I make the motion that we buy these overdue and much-needed trash trucks at the City of Newport Street Department.
Second, okay. Mr. Hans, I guess second is one, and they won, it don't matter which one. Okay, roll call, Miss Tina.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Absolutely.
Alderman Roger Gribble.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Ben.
Any comments from citizens? Need any, okay, Ms. Jones, she's got a.
Down there, the light, there was a load of post ups, and they're going to eat, uh, horseback. I excepted, opened it, and there was nothing, you couldn't even see a car coming, so when you're out working on the lights, I don't know what the timing is, but I have been known to run that line.
It's a two-minute timer, from what I understand.
Two minutes.
Yes.
The one down at the bottom of Jones' hill, you're setting a lifetime there, so we don't.
Yeah, I get, so you're.
If you can do anything, get fixed that thing.
Okay, we'll talk to, you want to talk to the state about that?
Well, that's a, that's actually us and NU, they don't set that, we've had complaints about that, we, Maurice has talked to NU, I've talked to the NU, and the two-minute is pretty much a standard, you've got a side street versus a state highway, and that's pretty much kind of a, a two-minute.
But it's not in sync going the other way, it's not, it's not in sync with the other lights going the other way.
Well, they, well, they're not, because they, they're not synced, they're all independent. The old lights are independent, the new lights are independent, they are triggered by sensors in the ground, when you pull your vehicle on that sensor, that triggers the clock, and you should not have to sit there longer than two minutes. Now, I went down there many times and tested that because we get so many complaints, and I've yet to sit there longer than two minutes.
But I mean, you know, when you're coming through there, you know, the idea was to get those lights in sync so that you could come all the way through town.
That's our ultimate goal, right?
To try to do that, yeah, but with the old lights, they're just, the old lights are not triggered, they're just on a timer, they just go at the same, I mean, you can't do anything with them.
Have we got any other comments from citizens? I hear none, do you hear a motion that we adjourn the meeting?
So move.
You got a motion?
Second.
You got a motion second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.